I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, September 10th, 2025. If everyone will please rise, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, first item is the superintendent's update and super member of the board report.
Fantastic. So I'm gonna start with a big event from last week. We had the state superintendent of Maryland, Dr. Carrie Wright, and the state Board of Education President, Chair Josh Michael, come down and spend a little bit of time with our students and staff at Captain Walter Francis Duke, finding out about the history of the school, interacting with several teachers in classrooms. They did a beautiful sign to welcome her. And something that hadn't happened in all of us, she's visiting every single school district and dropping in on schools. We were the only school district that actually had the Duke roving reporters ready to do an interview with the state superintendent. So if you will indulge me, the Duke roving reporters, new.
Good morning, Duke A Theaters!
I'm Ethan Howell.
And Nell Belkey.
And we are the Duke Roving Reporters. Today we have a special guest visiting Duke, Dr. Carrie M. Wright. She's our Maryland State Superintendent. Dr. Wright, can you tell us what it means to be a state superintendent?
Oh, thank you for that question. Yes, being a state superintendent gives me the opportunity to visit all the schools across the state and to visit with all the superintendents and principals across the state and to make sure that you, boys and girls, are getting the very best education you can possibly get. And that's what my job is.
Being a state superintendent sounds like a busy job with a lot of responsibility. Can you tell us how you got started in education?
I did. I started as a teacher. I was a classroom teacher, and I've taught second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, and sixth grade. And that's really how I got started, was teaching children of all different ages.
What was your favorite subject when you were in school?
I would have to say reading first, and then math second. And reading was because something that I learned to read at a young age, and then I found that I just enjoyed it so much, that I was one of those students that slept in my bed with a flashlight and covered my head up so that my mother would think that I was asleep, that I was really reading, until she discovered me one night. And then that was the last time I was able to read that late at night. And math, because my dad was a big mathematician, and he loved math, and showed me that math, anybody can be math, anybody can be a math person. So from the very beginning, it was reading and math for me. How about you? What's your favorite subject?
Mine's either writing or reading.
Okay, very good. How about you?
I really like reading and music.
Reading and music, very good, all right.
Dr. Wright, if you went back into the classroom, what grade would you teach?
Oh my gosh. Well, that's a hard one, because I was also a principal in elementary school, and so I worked with little ones, like when they were like three and four-year-olds, and those are so sweet. So it's hard to say. But then I really, really liked working with older students like you. So it would be hard for me to pick one grade, because to be honest with you, I really like them all.
Thank you, Dr. Wright, for taking the time to talk to us today. This is Ethan Howell and
Nell Belkey
with our amazing camera crew, Millie Hoff and Grayson Davis. We are the Duke Roving Reporters, signing off until next time.
Very nice, Wright. We cut the dad joke. It finishes with a dad joke. I will say this. So we are only in like the second week of school, and so they were spot on. They did this in one take. They were, they were ready to go. And as somebody who gets in front of a camera, and Ms. Mary Ann Williams is the most patient soul ever when I have to read something off a teleprompter, it takes, you know, multiple takes and a lot of outtakes. These kids were right on. So a wonderful visit. Thank you very much to Dr. Wright for making the time to come down and to making the time to visit all of the schools across the state, the school systems across the state of Maryland, to really see what's going on in, with our children in the classroom. A lot of times, we hear from very loud voices saying definitively what is going on in schools, and we find that they haven't really been in a school or in a classroom since perhaps they were actually attending schools themselves. So thank you very much for Dr. Wright to come down and visit. We're off to a rocking start. Last weekend, we had high school U.S. bands. Each one of our schools hosts a competition. Great Mills was the first. They hosted this past weekend. Chopticon High School received a first place in Group 1A. Leonardtown High School received a first place in Group 2, Group 3 Open. Incredible. This is, so we're used to athletics. And our marching band plays at our home games, and they're actively, but they are also going to each one of these competitions and each one of these events basically every single weekend. So if you are a band mom or a band dad, boy, you stay busy in the fall supporting your children as they perform in all of our great stadiums across the state of Maryland. We had new teacher seminar, the first formal of each month we're gonna get together. We're doing a different model this year. We have, we have a smaller cohort of teachers. So we're bringing in all the secondary teachers first, so we can have a great little intimate one-on-one conversation with about 15, 20, 25 of our new teachers. Then they have lunch or dinner. The elementary teachers come in, and they have dinner as well. So there's overlap with the dinner. And then I have an opportunity to talk to just the elementary teachers. In the years past, I have gone out to each one of the schools to meet individually with teacher cohort groups. But since there are so few that we hired this year, it's easier just to gather them all together on seminar nights and for me to have conversations with them, and then just to visit with them individually when they're out in their school. We focus on the fact that the first quarter in St. Mary's County Public Schools is, our theme is connecting. So it's making connections not only to the students in the classroom, but also the colleagues with whom they work. And we reinforced what we started in August with this concept of marigolds. You have to find your marigold. And a marigold is an incredible plant. It's called a companion plant, because it helps everything around it grow. It fends off weeds and insects and all these things. So if you are a plant, you want to be near a marigold. So you talked about finding marigolds at their schools and across our education community, who really help them grow into being the very best version of themselves as educators in St. Mary's County Public Schools. Great evening. Redistricting. So we have sent out, in all of the weekly school smores that went out on Monday or Sunday night, Monday, information about redistricting, a little bit, a link to our dedicated webpage, smcps.org/redistricting. On that webpage, there is everything you would need to know about school boundaries, about the policies, about the regulations, about how this has gone in the past. The last time we were redistricted, when we opened Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School. We also then put out a registration link for the very first community forum at the James J. Forrest Career and Technology Center. This is the first of many. And in fact, the next months, it'll be out, and it'll be, there'll be a Southern date, a Middle date, and a Northern date for doing all of this. But we put out the registration link. We were planning on having about 200 to 250 people join us, because we're doing the first one at the James J. Forrest Career and Technology Center. It's been open since Monday. I think we've got about 140-some registrations so far. So if you are interested in joining us for the very first one, please take the time soon and register for it. If you, if you aren't able to, if it's an inconvenient date, or you have a conflict, that's fine. All the information shared will be posted later. We will be making, we are videotaping it. We're not live streaming it, but we are gonna be videotaping it. So all of the salient information that's presented will all be put together in a video that's watchable, as opposed to referencing an hour and a half of presentations. So please pay attention. We have all the information that's out there. I know that on Facebook, there are a lot of people who are expressing themselves about redistricting. Please make sure that you're getting information directly from St. Mary's County Public Schools. smcps.org/redistricting, that is the information. Or you can watch Board of Ed meetings, or you can come to Board of Ed meetings, or you can send questions directly to the school system. So, good stuff with redistricting. Obviously, this will be an ongoing conversation. Every time we gather, I will be giving you an update, and we will also have more detailed presentations after we start our community engagement.
I have a question. So on the forum, the agenda is just presentations?
There's gonna be some interactions
Okay.
for the very, for the first one, when they come in. Again, this is, this is our consultant group, the very first time that they're coming down to getting, and introducing themselves to St. Mary's County Public Schools.
But it's not gonna run, it's not gonna be run as a public hearing or public comment section, like what we do at the board meeting?
No.
It will be a different form.
No, this is not.
I'm just saying, so people aren't misled by the forum word, right?
People, as people coming in, we're getting information, we're starting this process.
Correct.
We talked about this process all last year. We talked about how much it was going to cost to bring in a consultant all through the spring. We presented and built into this budget the costs for all of that. You reviewed the county policy for redistricting all throughout the summer. So people making claims that, where's this coming from? We're gonna, my kid's being moved this year, and please stop. We talked about this all last year. It is a process. We're now getting to the point where we have our outside consultant who's gonna come down and start facilitating, actually interacting with people in St. Mary's County. The big part of this is that when this, when this ends, when that, after the 25th, we have a survey that'll be sent out and available to everybody in the county for input. This is the, this is the, this is the part where we really start gathering input from people, not on Facebook, but directly to us, so.
And then, but then what happens? Aren't there three meetings?
Oh, absolutely, yes. There's, so this is, this is just the first. Then there are following meetings that will be held down in the southern part of the county, the middle part of the county, the northern part of the county. There's, there'll be, the timeline's available. We've got all of this, all of this laid out on www.smcps.org/redistricting. And all of this will happen much before proposals actually get publicly made to the board. The board will then weigh in. The board will then make decisions in 2026, in the spring of this year. Nobody will be moved from any school in this 2025, 2026 school year. This is for '26, '27, and beyond. So, we are, the good news is, people are reading their smores, and those interested in joining us are registering, which is really, really great, being an active part of the community and the community discussion. So here we are, September. We are in the second week of September. We have, next week is an abbreviated week. We have a two-hour early dismissal on Thursday, and then we have professional development for all of our staff. But most importantly, to those watching, it's no school for students, and it's Fair Day on Friday. So, nice, great start. Kids doing what kids do. I'm sure that we really will have an opportunity to do a lot of interacting with our community throughout this year, as we watch what's going on at the federal level, at the state level, with the Maryland State Department of Education, with the Accountability Implementation Board, with the blueprint, and with our county commissioners, as we talk about the future of St. Mary's County proper. So with that, Ms. Vanessa Lee?
All right, hi, everyone. I finally got my car to work, and now I'm here. But lately, I went to the St. Mary's Association of Student Council's Executive Board meeting. So I got to see students from all over the county, like Reichen, Chopticon, Great Mills, and Leonardtown. So it was really cool to meet all the student leaders that aren't just from my school, but from other schools as well. And so we're planning our workshops for our October General Assembly. So we have four general assemblies per year, and October 1 is our first one to get students introduced to the Regional SGA. And so I'm excited to introduce them to that. I'm also serving on the SMCPS Community Engagement Team for redistricting. So our first meeting is next Tuesday. I'm excited to provide the student input and ensure that the process is running smoothly. And then lastly, I am researching bills for our statewide and Capitol Advocacy Days for the Maryland Association of Student Councils. So for those who you don't know, I serve as a state Legislative Affairs Coordinator. And so I'm going through the process of right now and setting up for the legislative session that's about to come, and getting up to the MGA and to the federal level to go and talk to our legislators in person. And so that should be really fun. And then I wasn't here to present my report last time, but I also attended the Maryland Association of Boards of Education smob training. And so we, it was a really fun time. Me and my team won smob jeopardy. So we basically won by knowing the most amount of Board of Education rules and policies, and what a smob does. And so that was really fun. Other than that, I've been just going to school and having a great time.
Fantastic, thank you. I tried to give an update last time for you. I did, I did, and I talked about the monthly minute, and that video was fantastic, and it's been pushed out, and we see that on all of our social media platforms as well. So with that, SMCPS leads, thank you very much, and
Okay.
Chair Bailey?
All right, let's see, no recognitions, public hearings. Do we have anyone who signed up for the public hearing on our administration of medication to students? No, okay. So that public hearing is now closed, and I think they can still provide comments if anyone has it. Any public comment? No public comment? All right, next consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Today's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes of August 27, 2025, personnel, teachers. There are no administrative and supervisory appointments. And lastly, the fire suppression pump sprinkler service repair, maintenance, and installation contract RFP, SMCPS 2025 MFSSP. With that, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. We have two action items this morning. The first one is Mr. Wysocki with the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan for fiscal year 2026 for our educational facilities.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today I'll provide the Board of Education with information regarding the CMP for FY26. The purpose of this presentation is to provide an overview of the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan and how it ensures safe, efficient, and sustainable facilities for our students and staff. The objective is to request and for approval of the FY26 Comprehensive Maintenance Plan for Educational Facilities. By regulation, each LEA is required to submit an approved CMP to the IAC annually. This plan connects daily maintenance tasks with long-term facility goals, ensuring classrooms are safe, efficient, and supportive for students and for staff instructionally, ultimately linking together the needs of our system and tying them together with the state IAC requirements. Building maintenance directly impacts our student success. The CMP aligns facilities upkeep with long-term educational goals. Our vision is to provide a comfortable and safe learning environment. We utilize preventative maintenance tasks to reduce downtime of our assets. We highlight the shift from reactive maintenance to proactive plan strategies. We prioritize reactive, daily maintenance to support each unique facility. We collaborate our work with the maintenance department across our other DSS departments, keeping financial responsibility and workforce efficiency as our key indicators. Our Comprehensive Maintenance Plan is rooted in the industry best practices and standards, utilizing our lifecycle charts, data-driven insights, and IAC recommendations to strategically prioritize and manage our maintenance activities. We incorporate the state IAC MEA requirements to make these data-driven decisions. This is a look at our maintenance team. The 39.85 men and women that make up our maintenance department are responsible for a school building inventory upkeep, repair, and inspections that consist of 31 facilities, 65 relocatable units, and a total area covering 2.5 million square feet. Further breakdown, this is a look at our building trades team, responsible for maintaining and improving facilities through their skilled craftsmanship in the areas of carpentry, grounds upkeep, playgrounds, site water management, roofs, windows, doors, the building envelope, locksmith work, and movement of staff and instructional assets. Their work ensures a safe and functional and efficient learning environment by performing routine repairs, preventative maintenance, new construction, and renovation projects. The department also provides valuable hands-on training for our students pursuing careers and trades. We currently have two students from the Tech Center that are a part of the apprentice program. Both are, this year are doing a magnificent job, I will add. Overall, our building trades department plays a vital role in supporting the district's infrastructure and our educational mission. The next slide here is a breakdown of our engineering trades team. They play the role of maintaining and supporting the school system, ensuring the safety, functionality, and efficient operation of school facilities. Their work includes electrical, plumbing, HVAC, kitchen and appliance repair, general maintenance tasks, which help create our safe and conducive learning environment. Through proactive repairs, our preventative maintenance plan, and our urgent response to facility issues, the department helps minimize disruptions to the school day activities and extends the lifespan of our infrastructures. Their expertise is essential for maintaining productive and safe environment. And our third group here is our vehicle maintenance team. They play that crucial role in supporting our school system by ensuring a safe and reliable operation of all fleet vehicles, school-owned buses, grounds and snow removal equipment. Their responsibilities include routine inspections, preventative maintenance, repairs, and servicing of buses, vans, and other transportation vehicles and equipment. This department ensures the compliance and safety regulations, manages vehicle records, and performs those timely repairs to minimize any downtime. Their work's essential in providing the safe, efficient, and dependable transportation for students, staff, contributing to the overall safety and operation of our systems. The maintenance, let's see, maintenance of plant funding, I'm off the slide here. Stay with me for a second, I'm sorry. Looking at our work orders here, I'm sorry. The number of work orders requests has risen from just over 10,000 in FY2015 to just over 12,000 here in this past FY25. This represents a 26% increase over the past decade. Despite this growth, the Department of Maintenance has managed to reduce the annual backlog from 46 days, which was in 2015, to 11 days now in 2025. The realignment within the maintenance department emphasizes the collaborative team approach as a foundation for fostering that positive and productive culture within. By prioritizing our work, establishing the open communication, shared responsibility, the plan aims to enhance the operational efficiency and our overall workforce satisfaction.
Looks like it froze.
Thank you. This chart reflects the number of open work orders by month for the past two years. Each day, the work order queues evaluated and given a priority status. Work orders are then assigned to our technicians and/or our contracted service providers as needed. The amount of work orders closed per month is outmatched by the amount of work orders requested. Consistent evaluation of the critical needs and the planned preventative maintenance drive our daily queue. We strive to manage the workload with the resources that we have available. The maintenance of plant funding per square foot has increased from $1.48 per square foot in FY2016 to $2.40 per square foot in FY26. This shows an approved operating budget of just over $6.1 million, which does equate to that $2.40 per square foot. We implemented a new CMMS system last year, Asset Essentials from Brightly. The innovative platform allows us to efficiently manage and maintain the workload in a user-friendly platform. Asset Essentials has enhanced our planning and scheduling of our preventative maintenance work. Departments of Maintenance has taken a more refined customer service approach, where we're willing to tackle any additional tasks that are asked of us while we're on-site. As you can imagine, once we walk in a building, sometimes we're not allowed to leave. However, we have some different plans in mind, as we prioritize every day at 6:00 a.m. In the past, a new work order request was required, then the staff would return back to the site to complete that task. Now, we request that that work order does get submitted. However, while we're on-site, if we have the tools and materials available, we'll offer any customer service to our staff and our administrators. Granted, we could knock that out in under an hour, and, and again, supporting our customer service model there. Prioritizing our staff morale is crucial for the team's success, organizational performance. High morale directly impacts our productivity. The Department of Maintenance has actively implemented strategies to cultivate that positive, supportive approach with open communication, and most importantly, our regular meetings we have internally. We hold weekly and bi-weekly team meetings to discuss ongoing projects, gather that feedback, and address any concerns. It opens the floor to our team to have suggestions, and it helps everyone feel heard. Central to this approach of our team meetings is our regularly scheduled team meetings that serve as a platform for transparent communication, progress updates, and collaborative problem-solving. These meetings encourage team members to voice their concerns, share their ideas, and stay aligned with our departmental goals, ultimately building trust and reinforcing that sense of shared purpose. The leadership team meets weekly to discuss our complex systems. We discuss work order information, internal assessment information, and review our lifecycle charts. We use this information to prioritize our projects. The maintenance department also utilizes this dynamic project list, regularly updating this and adjusting it based on the evolving needs of our systems and the mechanical assets. This allows us to keep track and easily produce prioritized lists when needed. Oftentimes, the Department of Design and Construction has remaining funds from renovation projects. We then align critical needs and prioritize additional reallocation of funds for repairs and/or replacements as needed. The rise in work orders over the past few years can be directly attributed to the increasing proportion of our school inventory, reaching and exceeding 20 years of age. Prioritizing our preventative maintenance tasks over corrective maintenance necessitates reallocating resources away from that corrective work. The Preventative Maintenance Plan is essential to our planned work. We have embedded this complex preventative maintenance schedule into our CMMS in Brightly, which automatically tracks the timing of our annual, semi-annual, or monthly schedules. Another function of our maintenance department is to recommend and advise on renovation and replacement systems and requirements. Department of Maintenance reports recommendations for projects inclusive in the capital improvements program. These recommendations are based on schedule replacement, repair, and refurbishment, as noted in lifecycle charts, embedded in the CMP. In addition, we conduct annual facility inspections and preventative maintenance inspections, which are physical inspections of multiple systems, as seen in that previous slide. The Comprehensive Maintenance Plan for Educational Facilities and Capital Improvements Program are reflective of each other and well-coordinated. The results from the SRRR, the AFI, and the PMI, and other pertinent data are used in determining project recommendations made to the Department of Capital Planning. Table 8 represents the staffing recommendations from the associated of physical plant administrators and maintenance and operations staff. This comes directly from the IAC that they have embedded in required checklist that we provide within our CMP. This isn't something that I just went out and solicited to, to find on my own. So we use, this data is So we use, this data is solely based on square footage, and it does not consider the age of our buildings. The data indicates that during FY twenty-five school year, the Department of Maintenance was understaffed by four-point-one-eight FTEs. The result, the results in the maintenance load of just over seventy-five thousand square feet of facilities, facility per staff member compared to the APPA's recommended standard of that just over sixty-seven thousand per square feet. It's also essential to note that two current maintenance FTEs dedicate ninety-five percent of their time maintaining our fleet vehicles, and an additional four FTEs spend twenty-five percent of their time on logistical tasks such as moving furniture, instructional items, and equipment. While these roles are not reflective in the calculations of the APPA chart, it represents an additional need for two FTEs to address our maintenance responsibilities. In closing, thank you for allowing me to present the CMP today. In conclusion, our comprehensive maintenance plan is strategically designed to enhance the reliability, safety, efficiency of our facilities and equipment. By implementing these proactive maintenance practices, leveraging our data-driven insights, and fostering a culture of continuous improvement, we aim to reduce the downtime, expand asset lifespan, and optimize our operational costs. We're confident that this plan will position us for sustainable growth and operational excellence. In closing, I request that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented today. Thank you.
Questions? Vanessa?
No, just thank you so much for the presentation. I think it's really valuable that you guys are there to help keep our schools safe, and I really appreciate it.
No questions, thank you.
I just have one about the Brightly. Do you feel that, because you're using it now? How, is it a great decision that was made and see any more improvements needed?
Yeah, so right now, we're sixteen months in. So we went live with Brightly June twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-four. So we have over a year's worth of data embedded now into the platform. And yes, in my opinion, and for our team, it is a user-friendly platform, so it saves us time throughout our day. And it also gives us the ability to track and provide the state, the IAC, the data and the information that they need. And that was one component that was looked at in the years leading up to making that decision. But I do have to say for myself and our team, yes. It's extremely valuable. And the amount of time and the efficiency that we're allowed, we got more boots on the ground. Our technicians could be out in the schools and conducting the great work that they do for each of their respective trades rather than working through a priority list or making a secondary list from the previous platform that we had. So what we were doing is, you know, we had a work order system. We were receiving those work orders, but we then had to make our own charts, our own other ways to prioritize that work, track it, and make sure that essentially the accountability and it was all getting done. This is a, this is a one-stop shop now. Brightly is a one-stop shop for what we're able to do. And then on the, on the backside of this, pulling the data out to build the CMP at the conclusion of a fiscal year preparation, preparing for the following CMP, that retrieval is much easier now.
That's good to hear. Thank you very much.
Take my question, Dorothy. Say, Mary, the other thing?
Thank you for your presentation. It's very thorough, and you have provided us with a great amount of information, which is useful. And I appreciate your scientific and efficient approach to maintenance, replacement, and renovations with an emphasis on customer service. Thank you. I think your team does an excellent job.
Thank you.
I think the trends over the years in improving how quickly you're able to respond, how effective you are when you respond is a testament to the work that we've all tried to do to make resources available so that they're utilized in the schools where they're most needed. So, thank you.
I do got a question about the student. Is, are the two students, are they actually in school, and this is an apprenticeship? So then they move on after school? Or do you usually hire them? Or it just depends?
Yeah, well, we would love to hire them down the road. So right now, the two students that we have, they are seniors. They are, they work within the, they have coursework that is at the tech center. So they begin their day in their home school. Both right now start their day at their respective home site. They show up to our campus at approximately, somewhere between ten and eleven o'clock, and that's where they start their day. And it's a paid apprenticeship as well for them. But yeah. They get to be hands-on and to work with our men and women from our team and get to gather that experience. Sometimes they stick with the skill that they thought they wanted to pursue for the next forty years of their life. And then when they're with us, they get to explore that opportunity. So one of the students for us with our engineering trades team has an emphasis and would like to go the electrical route, but he also has the opportunity to explore the HVAC side of the house, plumbing, and be around the skilled technicians that we have. So in my opinion, for some, a teenager that is trying to figure out where they want to go, it's a great opportunity to be with us and in our system.
The apprenticeship program that we have that's in conjunction with the Petax and Partnership is extraordinary, and the opportunity to celebrate with those students at the end of the year and see who all's, you know, I mean, they're spread throughout the community. There are more that are within the system. I'm really pleased that this is something that we've been able to pursue and have grown over time. It's fantastic.
And I would like to say we practice what we preach, and we look on the outside for internships, and we also look inside the system for internships. Thank you.
May I have a motion?
I move that. I move that the Board of Education approved the fiscal year twenty-six comprehensive maintenance plan for educational facilities.
Do I have a second? Second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Howe with our twenty-seven State Capital Improvement Plan. Twenty-seven through thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Twenty-thirty-two.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You've heard me for many years say that, this is one of my favorite presentations that I get to do because I get to follow the maintenance plan, and it really talks about the coordination that happens at DSS. And this is one of those examples where we go from the comprehensive maintenance plan where we identify projects that may need to happen. How they moved to the master plan that we presented you in July till we get to this point now. So I enjoy the collaboration that happens that gets us to this point. So that really goes to the first slide that I have. While the presentation that Mr. Wazakinsky just gave summarizes the last fiscal year, we've already kind of moved on to the master plan that we presented to you back in July. incorporates all of the data that he would have had at that time and moves us on to today where we are with the state CIP where we start asking for projects. But it really is, and the funnel really kind of describes how this works for us. Mr. Wazakinsky and the Department of Maintenance, they really are monitoring, and they're maintaining, and they're predicting what we need to have. And as a result of his document, we develop projects that go into the educational facilities master plan, which we presented to you in June. It has been sent to the state. And at the same time, all of this is happening, design and construction is working on the studies to develop scopes and project budgets that we know we're going to need to do as well. So all of this planning is very cohesive. There's a lot of hallway conversations, office conversations, that get us to the point that we have a capital project. It takes a long time. It can take anywhere from up to eighteen months from the time a concept comes to fruition till we get everything that we need to do to come up with a capital project. So once all those studies and conversations happen on the left, we get to where we are today, where we are going to review the State Capital Improvements Program projects. They're due by October, and that is the first of that process. Then the final piece of that is the local CIP, which we'll present to you in December, which is the local projects. Once we get all of those projects funded, design and construction builds them, and then they go right back and they start this process all over, which is what Mr. Wazakinsky was talking about, how our buildings are starting to age to that twenty, twenty-five-year cycle again. We just put them back into the rotation. He maintains them, makes sure that they're operating at peak performance until we start the process over twenty to twenty-five years later. So what is the current focus of the CIP right now? As you heard in the presentation before, our focus is really on continuity of service. That's what we need to do every day is make sure that we have the best opportunity for our students and our staff to learn. So we're going to continue to focus on maintaining that infrastructure, including those system replacements and component replacements to extend their remaining useful life. We've had a lot of conversation at this table about things like chillers or rooftop units, that their lifecycle is much shorter than the main component. So there's been a lot of focus, and it was very evident in Mr. Wazakinsky's when you saw those work orders that were really, really high and how they dropped down. That really, when you look at that correlation, what you're going to see is that's when we really started to get the money for the critical and the programmatic projects that are addressing those smaller lifecycle replacements that we need to do to ensure that we can make it to a twenty-five or thirty-year process for a roof to be replaced or an HVAC to be replaced. The need for systemic projects supported by both SMCPS internal lifecycle and maintenance history, as well as the MEAs, the maintenance effectiveness assessments on Mr. Wazakinsky's side, and the school facilities assessments on my side. The state really is driving that data home when they make their decisions about funding a project. And as we've said in the past, it really gets to a point where you have to fail to get the money. And that is where the critical and programmatic come in, is how do we, how do we get to a point where we can keep things running longer? Because the state's going to be pushing that to the maximum amount. State projects, we're going to look at all available funding sources for full and partial HVAC systems, including ventilation and dehumidification loads. You're going to notice that in the budgets, we have really increased the budgets to address that concern to ensure that at bid day, we're able to do all that we want to do. Bundled HVAC system component replacements as well as other system components when possible. Our model has always been, if we're going to do an HVAC or a roof, we're going to do everything from the ceiling up to make sure that we're putting it back and we're destructing that space the least amount of time that we have to. And then our roof projects. Local projects to fund critical system components, such as the building critical for rooftop units, chillers, those type of things. The other thing you're going to start seeing come in a lot are going to be things like wellhouses and pumps, the generators, those smaller system components that we have to really focus on as well. We will continue to monitor enrollment. We do not need any new schools at this period in time. So when we start looking at the roof, the HVAC, and the chillers at the statewide assessment level, so this is the data that they use when they make their decisions. When we look at, and we started this chart last year, when we look at the total roof replacements, and we have various different kinds, in the zero to six years, in the six-year CIP cycle, the state is recommending that we should be doing twelve roof projects. And when we come down and look at the HVAC side of that, we should be doing eleven. So the need is very, very great. They've identified that. But they have not changed that our annual allocation is five million dollars a year. So that scale is tipped where the need is far greater than the funding sources that are coming in from the state. What do we currently have planned in our twenty-seven to thirty-two cycle? We have seven roof projects and nine HVAC. So short of what the state is saying. However, trying to get these funded is going to span that time. We would love to do them sooner, but with a state cap of five million dollars, it really becomes a challenge of how do we face those projects? In listening to a conversation at a MAID meeting yesterday, one of the things that everyone is really indicating is the need for local forward funding to keep up with the pace. So that is a discussion that we're going to have to continue to explore as we move forward as well. When it comes to state funding, we do everything we can. We go out and we search for every source of funding that we possibly have. And then this year, we've got, we've had some opportunities and been successful, and it's going to change a little bit the dynamic for how we're going to move forward. In our traditional CIP, we are still set for the fifty-eight percent share for twenty-seven and twenty-eight, which is a good thing. I was slightly concerned that might be lowered this year. We still are on the rolling average of five million dollars per year. It was adjusted for CHOP-TICON. The state will kind of say that everyone has that project that they need to support. CHOP-TICON was the project that they were supporting. And there's a two-hundred-and-eighty-million target for FY twenty-seven. And I think the state and the IAC is very aware that that is not sufficient, but it is dependent upon what is allocated through the state budget as to what we can get. There has been specialized sources of funding. We have remaining in our Built to Learn Act thirteen-point-five million. We will be asking for that. It will be before you. Our state agent that is working on that is currently out. But we should be bringing that to you in October or November to go ahead and dedicate that allocation to CHOP-TICON, which will finalize that funding source. We were able to successfully, this one is something we're really pleased with. We were able to garner six-point-eight million from the Healthy School Fund in FY twenty-six for the CHOP-TICON asbestos assessment and roof replacement. It is the last year of funding for this funding source. It was an incredible gain for us because, as I remember, as mentioned, we're targeted to get five million annually from the state with a little bit more. Bringing in the seven million dollars in twenty-six has really, and you look at the thirteen million that we're getting for Built to Learn, changed our dynamic. We are only two-point-one million dollars away from fully funding the state's share of CHOP-TICON in FY twenty-seven. Moving forward, there should be the Nancy Kopp School Facilities Priority Fund. The work that the state needs to do to complete that has not happened yet. That is supposed to replace the Healthy School Fund. What we have been advised is, in the event that it is not finalized for this fiscal year, that standards equivalent to the Healthy School Fund would be utilized. So we're anticipating that there will be money there. We just don't know what that's going to look like this year. The Aging School Program has sunset. We got our last funding allocation for that. It wasn't a lot, but it was one of those little sources of funds we could knock out a small project really quickly. It didn't require a match. We are sad to see that one go. The school safety grant, this year, the IAC administered that, and we have applied for two projects for that, waiting for the approval. We have been indicated that that may go back to the Maryland Center in future years, but right now it is residing with the IAC. And we are going to pursue a decarbonization grant through the Maryland Energy Administration. That grant is in the works right now and has to be submitted by November. And we're going to be looking at other components of that for the CHOP-TICON project. In the event that we're able to bring in that money, we should be able to go back and then look at some of the things we were not able to fund that we had wanted to. We will always continue to look at legislative grants and federal funding. The important piece of this is, and that's why I've got that blue chart in for CHOP-TICON. As I mentioned, in FY twenty-seven, the current year, the remaining on the project is fifteen-point-six million. Well, thirteen-point-one of that now, because we were able to get the Healthy Schools Grant, thirteen-point-five of that fifteen will be the Built to Learn Act. That leaves us two-point-one million left. That's all we need in state traditional funding. If we knew we were supposed to get an allocation this year between nine to eleven million dollars because it was CHOP-TICONS, that leaves us that funding that they have geared towards us. What we've done, and we'll explain a little farther, is we've advanced another project to utilize that funding. We do not want to lose that state funding. We strategically put ourselves in a place where we've brought in other sources. We're going to maximize this opportunity that we have now. Capital funding will not look the same. We know that traditional funding will be replaced with a priority. We know that we're going to have multiple sources of projects. This is the first time we've had three sources of funding on a project. We may wind up with four sources. We know that's going to be the process moving forward. We're still waiting for the IAC to come up with their Maryland Condition Index. It's going to predicate how projects get approved in the future, and we're going to continue to look for sources outside of that. What really has to happen is we are going to continue to reinforce the relationship we have. we have with the county funding department and the state funding department to make sure that we our projects. So, this is the locals' side. This is only the state-funded projects. We have not made adjustments to the local CIP yet. That is on this list. That will come before you in December. But this is where we were and what we've already shown as what our projects will be. With that change and the ability to get that extra $7 million on the CHOP-TACON project, the county will fund their portion in '27 and '28. We will have the bulk of the state funds upfront. We will utilize those funds first. What that did allow us to do is to advance Esperanza's HVAC systemic renovation. It will not include a chiller because that's already in the works. But what that allowed us to do was take that additional allocation that the state was prepared to pay on CHOP-TACON, and we're going to ask them to apply that to Esperanza Middle School. The other piece of that that we are moving forward is Leonardtown HVAC systemic renovation has been accelerated. We'll be doing this, the study and then construction would happen in FY '29. And you'll see the new project in for the additional LHS chiller number two. Let's move to the state side of this. And what does it look like from the state's side? As you can see, the state was supposed to be providing $11.3 million. We are asking for 22.6, but 13 million of that is Built to Learn already assigned to us. We fall within the range of where we wanted to be. What that allowed us to do was accelerate 5.6 million for Esperanza and to make the chiller at Leonardtown High School state-eligible versus being just locally funded. If the additional funding comes in for the decarbonization grant, that would be used at CHOP-TACON to advance other pieces of that that we have unfortunately put into alternates at this point in time. It would give us the ability to go back and relook at that. Also, to take into account, there may be changes to the tariffs and what things may cost at bid day. So, the projects that we have for you today would be CHOP-TACON, the final year of that, 13.1 would be, or 13.5, sorry, would be Built to Learn, 2.1 would be Traditional CIP, asking them to fund 5.6 million for the first year of Esperanza's HVAC and then to fund 1.3 for Leonardtown's chiller. That would be our state request this year. No new projects would be introduced into that state CIP, given the magnitude of those two projects, until FY '30, when we would be looking for construction funding again for Town Creek to start those processes again. When you look at that list on the bottom, you're going to see a whole bunch staggered together. We're going to do everything we can over the next couple of years to garner additional state funds, to look at what decarbonization grants may be to accelerate those projects as well. Cognizant of the fact that the commissioners have other projects that they have expressed that they need to complete as well. We'll find that balance. So, that is the state CIP at this point. So, if you have any questions, I'm here to help.
Can you explain the change in the priority fund? When the, what's going to happen with that?
So, as we understand it, that is still in the works. The priority fund is going to look at the School Facilities Assessment, and there will be other criterias that they put. Each project or each school will get a score based on the things that need to happen, whether HVAC or roof. And as we understand it, those are going to set the priority of how funding is going to be allocated. For us, that's a challenge because we have to let things fail. And we don't do that at Supporting Services. The higher the score you have, which means when they look at the remaining useful life, how long have you gone beyond the time it was supposed to? So, if it's an HVAC and it was supposed to last 30 years, when you get to 32, 33, 34 years, that's where you're going to have to be. And that's where the critical and programmatic funding for us is going to be critical because we are going to have to, chillers are not going to make it that long. Rooftop units are not going to make it that long. And that's where you're going to see the frustration on Mr. Wazikinsky's part is how does he keep the sufficiency of our buildings going, the continuity of our services going while we're waiting to get this? And if there is not an infusion of money into that priority fund, if we're still locked in at $5 million, we're going to be competing with everybody else when theirs are failing at a greater rate than ours are. And it is from, from the facility planner's standpoint on our side, it is so frustrating because we know that we want to get things done at the time that they need before they fail. You want to take them to the brink, and we always have. You know, we get 32, 33 years out of something. But it, when it goes, it has to be replaced, and you don't want failure. And that's what I think every county in my department is worried about, is the potential that we're going to have failures waiting to get the funding.
Who's setting up the priorities, the criteria for the priority fund?
There is a committee that was formed. I was not able to be at the meeting yesterday or listen to the meeting yesterday. I was, I had a doctor's appointment. The concern that we all have from our standpoint is that committee is not being meeting. It was supposed to have been done years ago. But there is a committee that is reviewing this. And then ultimately, the IAC will be approving.
Was the committee seated based on the legislative?
Yes.
Bill? All right. And then, my other question is for this, for the advancement of the, the movement of the, one point, whatever, from CHOP-TACON to Esperanza, are you pretty confident that the IAC will accept our proposal on that? And have they done it in the past, I guess?
Yes, they have done this in the past. And Esperanza being the unique project that it is and the backing that it has, one of the very first questions they'll ask about a project and whether it's through one of their grants or through the CIP is, has this building ever closed? And Esperanza has that going in its favor in terms of funding. And this is where the frustration comes in. When that's the first question that they ask, we've waited too long. And that is, that is the challenge. But that is the very first question that they've ever asked is what is the impact on education then? And it shouldn't be, has a school closed? But I've had conversations, we've had, we started this discussion back in the summer. There have been conversations with the IAC. They're aware that this is what our request is. We open dialogue with them, and it will take a lot of coordination on our part. The reality is they have that money ear-tagged for St. Mary's. We're going to get it. That is, that is my goal. We're going to get the funding. And this allows us to advance two projects and to make the chiller state-eligible for the commissioners. That is a huge win because if not, we have to do that. There's, there's not an option. We have to replace that chiller.
And keep our $5 million rolling average intact as long as possible?
Exactly. We, we, there's, it's inconceivable to drop, to think about dropping below five. But if you don't keep that, that engine going and you're not constantly asking for it, that is the reality that can happen. And it's, it's just for us, it's inconceivable that in 2025, we're talking about getting $5 billion from the state.
Yes.
For years after year after year.
Yes.
I agree. Okay. All right. Then, I have to do any questions?
No questions. Thank you for the information. I know that was a lot to put together, so I appreciate it.
Josh?
No questions. Thank you. That was very comprehensive. Appreciate that.
So, I do have a question. Do you have any? Who sets the criteria for receiving the money? Like, is it just based on need?
You mean at the state level?
Yes.
It is, it is based on their assessment of our facilities through the Maintenance Effectiveness Assessment and the School Facilities Assessment. That information is the most leading information that they take. While it is, while the way that the Capital Improvement Program is set up as a state is that it is a local need request. This is, we put it in our priority. There is dialogue with the state, and they do ask questions about projects. And they review the data that Mr. Wazikinsky has on how he maintains it and maintenance orders. We look at our assessments that they do for us. Ultimately, it is the IAC staff and then the commission that ultimately can make the decision. They can turn down, and they have turned down, projects in the past. It is our priority, their decision.
Okay.
Mary?
No questions. Thank you. You do a very thorough presentation. Thank you.
I have an amazing staff of Mary Hayden and Tracy Lumpkin back in the office that are instrumental to our ability to provide the data, so.
And thank them as well.
I think it's frustrating that the state wants us to allow systems to fail, to put students and staff in challenging positions in terms of the, you know, HVAC failing and other maladies that before they'll take care of, take care of a project. And even then, it's questionable. I'll just say, I miss Yale Stensler.
It comes down to, it comes down to funding, as it always does. Last year, there was close to $700 million in requests and $280 million in funding. Tough choices have to be made.
Because of the choices they've made throughout all these years. Thanks very much.
Okay. May I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the July 2025 Educational Facilities Master Plan for submission to the Interagency Commission on School Construction.
Have a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We have two informational items today. First one is attendance awareness with Ms. Weaver.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I'm Kate Weaver. I'm from Student Services, and I'm here today with Ashley Fox. She's our lead school psychologist and MTSS co-coordinator. Jamie Walker is her partner in crime with MTSS. She's one of our PPWs. We are excited to be here today to celebrate, like we do every year, Attendance Awareness Month. We are going to share in this presentation this year's attendance initiatives. And we're also, at the end, going to show you a brief attendance video that was produced by Marianne Williams and her team. We wanted to start first with the chronic absenteeism definition. It actually includes unlawful and lawful absences. It's where a student is chronically absent for more than 10% of the school days during the year, and they have to have membership for at least 10 of those days. Students who are physically not on school grounds, and, but this is excluded with programs like our Virtual Academy. So, and that's approved off-ground location. But attendance, these days, they add up. So, in the small little graphic that you see to the right there, if a student misses two days a month, that is a full year of school that they're missing out on instruction until they graduate. If they miss four days out of a month, that's equal to two years. So, we just wanted to let the community, our staff and parents know that, to really pay attention to that because just two days a month can really be detrimental to instruction.
So, one of the ways that we address attendance in our buildings is through our multi-tiered systems of support. This is a data-driven framework that is created to use positive school initiatives to create safe spaces for our schools and effective learning environments for all of our students. Each of our schools have a MTSS team that meets monthly to review data, make decisions, make action plans, and so on and so forth. We also have a district-level MTSS team that also takes a look at our data from a system-wide perspective and assesses what our training needs are for our buildings and staff to be able to keep things rolling in a positive light. MTSS is essentially the vehicle by which we roll out all the supports that we do for our students. So, this is something that we use for social-emotional learning, academics, and attendance as well. So, just to dive a little bit deeper to create an even better understanding of MTSS is understanding the triangle. So, our staff is very familiar with this. They know as soon as they see those colors, what we're getting ready to discuss. Essentially, MTSS is broken down into three main tiers. You have tier one, tier two, and tier three. As we talk about these, I want us to remember that these are layered supports. So, as a student may move up the tiers as far as in need of, of support, they're not losing supports from the previous tiers. So, that first tier is looking at what are our core instruction pieces or our core supports that we're providing to students? And for about 80% of our students, that is all that they'll need, at least from a numbers and research base. There's about 5% to 15% of our students that will need a more targeted approach to whatever skill or whatever the need might be. So, this could be grouped interventions, and we'll talk a little bit more about this and how it relates to attendance in just a little bit. And then, tier three is really looking at more individualized supports. That's about 1% to 5% of our school populations. The reason why this is important is that it allows us as a system to utilize upstream thinking. So, we're trying to be proactive versus reactive, using data to make decisions for the needs of our students in our community.
Before we get into all the details of those tiers, we wanted to just give you a brief overview of what does this look like in schools? So, just, just overall, we promote positive school culture and positive conditions for learning and engagement. Of course, we want our students to feel safe, that they belong in school, that they're connected to the school. We create a welcoming school community, school environment. We form attendance teams, and we look at ways to provide interventions to students and families. We recognize good and improved attendance. We celebrate those achievements. We want to remove all of those barriers because as everyone knows, attendance is just, if you're missing and you're absent, it's just a symptom. We want to look for the root cause. What is going on? We have to remove those barriers, whether it's food insecurities or if there's housing difficulties, transportation difficulties, homelessness. Provide them with school supplies, clothing to come to school. We also offer mentoring, which is our check-in, checkout program, which Ashley's going to talk about in a second. We want to engage and connect with our families, which of course is our initiative with our superintendent this year, and building those community partnerships.
So, what does this look like within our tier? So, the next part of the presentation is going to break down, okay, what strategies are considered tier one, what strategies are considered tier two, and what strategies could be considered tier three? And we've included a lot of examples for you, but there are more out there in our buildings. Our buildings are working really hard on attendance initiatives. So, to start with tier one, this is our universal prevention. This is strategies that are aimed to encourage better attendance for all students. So, again, thinking about that, that lower end of the triangle there, that 80%. One of the main ways that we do this is by creating clear and concise and consistent communication about scheduling and expectations, just so off the bat, everyone sort of knows what the expectation is for school. Next is really, again, honing in on the connection piece, is creating that positive school alignment. All of our schools have sets of expectations for students that allows them to be able to teach some social-emotional learning skills as well as allow them to feel safe and have predictable routines within their day. This also includes student and family engagement activities. I'm sure we're going to see lots of trunk-or-treats coming up in October. Attendance posters in schools, attendance initiatives. I'm sure we've all heard of the attend dances that can happen sometimes at schools and things like that. We do have robo-calls for students when they are absent, and then we, of course, are monitoring that attendance data on a regular basis.
So, this was our first time ever. We introduced, it was the week of February 10th through the 14th of last school year. This was our school-wide, so, or excuse me, district-wide, so it was across the county, Attendance Spirit Week. And as you could see, we had a nice little Canva creation that Ashley created. And this went out to all the smores. And we picked February as a district-wide team. And we picked February as a district-wide team. It was because it was right after the holidays and right before state testing was starting. So, there's a lull in February, so we wanted to bring more excitement and really energize students to attend. So, as you can see, we just, for example, in our town middle school, you could see we had Monday was Wacky Socks, and then they had a homeroom competition with rock-paper-scissors. So, we were trying to disincentivize it a little bit more. On Tuesday, they had superheroes in a photo booth during lunch. So, students wore their favorite superhero branded shirts, and they exchanged Paul Bucks tickets to use the photo booth. There was Crazy Hair Day and Hat Day, and that was a homeroom walk-and-talk, which the kids loved. Thursday was Bright Colors and basketball games. They loved that tournament. And then on Friday, it was Love My School and Grade Level Celebration. The grade with the week's highest attendance won a great prize. So, it was, it was good. And we have another one coming up.
We do.
All right. And Sam, our attendance dog, of course, this week during this Attendance Spirit Week, he traveled. He likes to travel around. And here he was at Green Vinoles. And our theme last year was be here to get there. So, be in school to get where you want to be in the future. And of course, he's going to be traveling next week too, because Ashley's going to talk about this.
Yes. So, has a district-level MTSS team in conjunction with our, our PPWs, as well as getting some feedback from administrators across the county. We talked about when to do the Spirit Week this week. So, we landed on doing it in September since it is Attendance Awareness Month, and it's a great way to start the year, having us focused on being in school. So, we, so this will be during Fair Week, so that's why it's sort of fair-themed. But each day has a theme, but we tie the theme to something related to attendance. So, you'll see on Monday, it's Jersey Day. We are working as a team to hit 94% attendance rate. Come to school wearing your favorite jersey. So, for each of these, you'll see there's a tie to school attendance. And after we saw some of the outcomes from last year with schools really taking and running with it, we also came up with some activities that they could tie into the Spirit Day if they wanted to. This is certainly an optional thing. And just really hoping that folks will just give that nod to being present at school as they're going through these days and as they're doing these activities with all students as part of a tier-one support.
And also what we do is we want to share out information to our communities, especially during those attendance meetings and things like that. So, we put together last year when it was so too sick to come to school. So, just as a reminder, parents, if students have, you know, a fever, if they're having some stomach issues, pink eye, I know, hand, feet.
Hand, foot, mouth.
Yeah, it's been a big one. So, you know, that's something that you definitely want to call. And I'm going to emphasize this, that we have full-time school nurses in every single school. So, if parents are, you know, worried about not sending their child to school, to please contact your school nurse. And we also have the school-based health centers now that parents can utilize.
All right. So, this takes us into tier two. So, we categorize it as early intervention, specifically when we're talking about attendance pieces. So, when we're looking at that second tier, we're looking at removing some of the barriers for our students that are already showing us that we're having some difficulty coming to school. So, we gave the metric here of students who have missed about 10% of school days. So, what can that look like? It can look like counseling or lunch bunch groups. At Duke Elementary School, we have a morning group where they connect with peers, and a staff member has essentially games and things for them to do to help them want to get to school in the morning, to address the connection piece. We have regular attendance meetings as well that can be more targeted, not just looking at percentages, but as we notice certain students are not coming to school, then making plans moving forward on how to place them and what their needs might be. Again, removing those attendance barriers. So, taking a look at, is it a transportation issue? Are there underlying health concerns that might be going on? Housing, food insecurities, anything of that nature? We want to try to be able to make sure that we are taking a look at and supporting where we can. Another example is something called our check-in-checkout program. And this is used for a multitude of things for students. It can be for behavioral reasons, but it can also be for attendance. What this allows us to do is have a student build a really solid relationship with a staff member in the building that speaks with them at the beginning of their day and at the end of their day. And they celebrate all the good that happens in the in-between. And then also, there is the possibility of family visits as well if that's needed.
All right. And then we're moving on to tier three, which is our most intense support. So, that, when you envision the triangle, that's the top, where the red is at the top, and that's students missing 20 or more school days, and they need that intensive level of support. And this includes with our attendance teams and our experts that are on there, working with the family. And we really provide wraparound services. We could create attendance incentive plan for them to support their progress. And then we also have referrals to the Interagency Committee on School Attendance, which is going to start in October. And we meet month-to-month too. And that's where all of our community members come to the board office and they meet with us to look at some of these, these hard cases. All right. And we added this slide this year too. We just wanted to really focus on, when students attend school, what are the qualities that they learn? Like, what is a portrait of a graduate? So, you know, they learn how to be a good citizen, how to be a good communicator, collaborator, self-advocate, and critical thinker. And all of this prepares you for life. So, it's not only, you know, the educational piece that, I mean, it's just all of these qualities moving forward that will help them.
It's creating well-rounded individuals for the future. So, how can parents help at home to, to help us with this attendance initiative? First is maintaining those daily routines. Kids really thrive when there are solid routines. Schedule medical appointments after the school day. I know that can be tough, but that is definitely a recommendation. Schedule vacations when school is not in session. Send your child to school every day unless they're sick and utilize those guidelines that we showed a little bit earlier. Make up all work if a child is absent. And if your child seems anxious to go to school, get folks involved that could potentially help, whether that be the school counselor, the PPW, maybe even the school psychologist as well, or one of our many social workers as well. So, we would love to be able to help with those pieces.
And as you can see here, like I said, Sam travels. So, he went to the back-to-school blast that happened over the summer. And he was also at the school, or the fair, which was last year. So, we're hoping that he will attend the St. Mary's County Fair this year as well. And then next is the video. And this, of course, we just want to give credit to again, to Mary Ann Williams and her team for creating this.
Attendance matters because you matter.
Attendance sets you up for success and also ensures that you stay on track for graduation.
Attendance builds important skills, such as social skills and the ability to communicate with others.
Maintaining your attendance can help you build skills such as organization and time management.
Come to school to see your friends, join clubs, and play sports, and all the fun things that they offer.
If you miss two days of school a month, that adds up to 20 days of school missed. Missed days of school are incredibly hard to catch back up.
Students who are chronically absent miss 10% on more of the school year, and this negatively affects your academic success.
If you're sick, stay home. But other than that, we want you at school.
Teachers and staff are here to support you, so don't be afraid to ask for help if you need it.
Attendance matters because you matter. Every school day counts.
Thank you. Do you have any questions or comments for us? Vanessa?
Uh, no, I really liked the video. Thank you so much for all that information. I think it's really important that students, you know, how much attendance does matter and impacts your academic success. So, I appreciate all the information.
Thank you.
I appreciate your work to address chronic absenteeism. We're getting ready to have a presentation on MCAP scores. And so, if you dig, if you do a deep dive into the report cards for each school, you'll find that a high level of chronic absenteeism definitely affects performance and proficiency. So, I appreciate your effort to address that. Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah.
I think it's important, and you brought it up about, there's communication. So, if a child is a little antsy about going to school, you even mentioned, hey, talk to the teacher. There's open channels to be able to talk, because that's, that's a big step, you know? Instead of just, what do I do as a parent? Why don't they want to go to school? But it's important. It's important to be in communication with the teachers, for sure. Thank you for mentioning that.
So, as we started this school year, did, is there identification of the students who were chronically absent last year? And you're already starting outreach with them?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep. It just transitions. Yep, but we got all of those numbers over the summer, and those are, yep, those students are compiled and handed right to those attendance teams. Yeah.
And a real emphasis on the fact that everybody starts with perfect attendance.
Yes.
So, you know, regardless of what last year was, this is a brand-new year.
I'm just saying, like.
Yes, we don't, you know, we historically.
Right, I understand. But if I was a parent, took my child out to, you know, on three-day weekends twice a month, you know? Maybe someone should tell me, hey, you know, this is, maybe I shouldn't do that.
That's the whole idea of multi-tiered, you know, support. We know exactly who is one, two, or three.
Right, yes.
And, you know, I, I, over the years, so many parents, oh, my kids are doing really well, so it's not going to hurt them. I think it hurts in ways that you don't understand at the time, but later on, come to light, and you start scratching your head going, you know, why does my kid not want to get up and go to work? Well, because, you know, that's sort of their, their pattern. I think it's, it's easy for that to spiral out of control and hard to see down the road. And I just appreciate all that you're doing to try to help all of us understand the importance of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can't connect if you're not here.
That's right.
And that is, that's, that's incredibly important. That's awesome.
All right. Josh stole my thunder. Now we have our MCAP scores.
Well, it was on the agenda too. I mean, it was publicly available.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. Well, now you've done it.
There you go.
All right.
Good morning. I'm Katie Cordicrax, Chief Academic Officer.
Donna Thorsonson. I'm the Director of Accountability and Reporting.
And we wanted to acknowledge Tammy Burr. She helped us put this presentation together for you guys today. Little fun fact before we dive in, Ms. Thorsonson and I were instructional resource teachers together at Esperanza Middle School. I oversaw ELA and Social Studies. She oversaw Math and Science. And because old habits die hard, that's, that is how we're going to present the information today. The following data has been provided to us by MSDE. They lifted the embargo on August 26th, but I do want to clarify that we don't have all of the MCAP data. Well, I shouldn't say that. We do, but some of it is still under the embargo, and we'll talk about that a little later. But we do have all the ELA, all the math, and then part of the science MCAP data to share. Most of the percentages in this presentation have been rounded to whole number. We also want to note that we are not presenting about the Maryland State Report Card at this time. That doesn't come out until around December. And I think we'll present about that in January. The Maryland State Report Card is like a comprehensive look. It includes attendance and graduation data and school climate data. This is really, MCAP is a part of that, but it's just a snapshot of the overall performance of a school.
So, as we take a look at these MCAP scores, there are four levels of performance, four levels of proficiency. Our goal is level three or four. Those are proficient and are distinguished learners. Couple of things to think about as we're looking at this data. Again, as I mentioned, three and four is what we're aiming for. But with some of these assessments, a difference of two questions can make it, can bump you down to that level two. So, just keep that in mind as we go through this data.
Can I ask you a question before we start?
Sure.
So, for all these tests, these are all, what are they, what is, what is the term that we use? They're all progressive or whatever it is. So, based on what your, what your questions are in the first three tests shoots you off onto a different trail.
Adaptive.
Exactly.
Yes.
Adaptive, right? So, just so we're all clear, the five of us are, can sit up here and take this test. We will not have the same 30 questions. Is that correct? So, based on my answers, I'm going to be shot somewhere. Dorothy answers differently. She's going to be shot somewhere else, correct? Okay.
Yeah. And we'll be talking about the need for a new assessment later on.
Thank you very much. Yes, perfect.
Okay. So, talking about the scaled cut scores. Again, three and four is what we're aiming for. The cut scores can get, can look different at every, on every assessment and every content. So, for example, fourth grade math, the cut scores may look a little bit different in grade four than they do in grade three and in grade five, but ultimately, 750 is the mark we're aiming for. That's what, what you hit in order to be considered proficient. So, whether that's third-grade ELA or the Algebra I MCAP assessment, 750 is the goal, 750 or higher.
Okay. We took this slide directly from the presentation given to the Maryland State Board of Education in late August. It really is a comprehensive look at how students in grades three through eight, and then in 10th grade as well, performed across the state. So, that's important to note. I'll direct your attention to the key, the map key. The deeper the red, the higher the proficiency. You'll notice that we fell in the second range of cut scores, but only by less than 3%. So, the goal is deep red.
We could have been deep red down here. We could have been.
Next year. There's two questions.
We were only 3%.
It could have been two.
Right, which could have been two questions.
Right.
That is accurate. You'll note that the scores across all LEAs range from 31% to about 69%, making about a 40% differential. As the chart shows, SMCPS, our average score was 57%, having us ranked seventh out of 24 LEAs. Last year, we were ranked ninth. So, that's some improvement.
Moving up the charts. Keep in mind though, that number, that's a really, it's a, it's a percent of a percent across third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and 10th grade ELA scores. But in the grand scale of comparison, we're seven.
So, the last slide was a comprehensive look across all grade levels, elementary, middle, high. This slide breaks it down by grade band, gives you some trend data. The bar graph above is the same information as the table, the black table below. It's just presented differently. But you'll note that our scores have incrementally increased. We started giving the MCAP in 2022, and our scores have gone up since then. Last year, grades three to five, our average was a 53% proficiency rate in comparison to the state, which is on, directly to the right, and they were at a 48%. Look to the right side of the slide, that's middle school. That's grade six through eight, and their performance in ELA, they did have a slight dip last year, right, as school year 24, and we recovered that dip in school year 25. So, we're sitting at a 57% average proficiency rate in middle school in comparison to the state, which is still at 51%.
Arrows moving up, better than the state.
Same chart, but for 10th grade. So, it's important to note that 10th grade, it is a graduation requirement that they take the 10th grade MCAP. It's also an indicator of college and career readiness, and we are real proud of this particular score. 70% of our 10th grade students across the county scored proficient or higher last year. And we remain 10% above the state average. So, they're at a 60%.
Okay. I'm going to talk about our math scores, and these infographics are going to kind of mirror what, what Katie had in hers. Going back to the map that MSDE provided for us, we are in the dark red.
We made the dark red.
Yes, we did. For mathematics, the statewide average was 26.5%, and we fell at 35%, which sounds terrible, but again, it's above the state average and not too far from our friends over in Worcester. So, they're, they're really setting that bar high for us. Something, something, a couple of things to note. We did have a nearly 6% increase in proficiency from last year to this year, which is fantastic. We're 8.5% above the state level as opposed to 5% last year. So, again, growth is always important. We're 8.5% above the state level as opposed to 5% last year. So again, growth is always important. But clearly, there's still work to be done. You guys saw Dr. Carrie Wright in that video earlier during today's board meeting. During the August State Board of Ed meeting, she talked about, they had appointed a technical advisory committee, is what they called that, to take a look at these assessments because, again, those numbers are concerning. And they did find anomalies, which she shared during that meeting. And it was the recommendation for a brand new state assessment. So the RFPs for that assessment, she said during that meeting, come out this month. She said the process takes about nine months, start to finish. And so we're likely looking at a new assessment administration in the 26, 27 school year. That's a fast timeline.
That is a very fast timeline.
Yep. But we are hopeful that they are, in fact, moving in that direction.
I'll also point out that in terms of our scores versus Worcester, Worcester has fewer students. At last I knew about $7,000 more.
They are one of the, we have one of the highest funded school systems in the state of Maryland.
Thank you. Just saying.
All right, this is a breakdown of our grade bands, elementary and middle school. So you can see that we scored, our elementary students were 42%, 40, 42% of our elementary students were proficient as opposed to 36% at the state level. In middle school, 29% of our students fell in that proficient category as opposed to 17% of our middle school students. Little shout out for our middle school students. Our sixth graders ranked third in the state with their performance. Our seventh graders ranked second in the state. And overall, grades six through eight, as a whole, they ranked third in the state. So they're doing something right in those middle schools. We spent a long time in middle school, so that makes us both feel proud. Something else to note as we're looking at this data, we're going to talk about Algebra One data on the next slide. But when you're looking at that middle school data, the eighth grade student data, those are the students that are taking eighth grade math as opposed to algebra. So about 30% of our middle schoolers do take algebra in the middle schools, meaning they take the Algebra One assessment. They are not included in that. This is the, the remaining 70% of eighth graders that have taken that test. And as I referenced, this is our, this is how we performed on that Algebra One assessment. You can see, if you look at that, it's a little bit easier to see in the chart down at the bottom. We've increased in proficiency by 3% every single year. So steady growth is great. We are outperforming the state by 5%. This slide looks similar to, obviously, the ones in, in this presentation and in years past. We did add a second graphic, though, to this slide, which breaks down the makeup of that, of the students that take that algebra assessment. So roughly 1,300 students took the Algebra One assessment in the spring last year. Of those 1,300 students, 407 of them were middle schoolers and 253 of those students were proficient, which is about 62%. 908 high schoolers took that assessment, 95, 95 of them, I wish it was 95%. 95 students were proficient, which is 10%. And again, taking a look at that number, it's concerning. Excited about that new assessment.
Right. Challenges, the challenges with the assessment. If you give, if you give an assessment and only 10% of children pass it, your assessment is broken.
Well, because you, you can't, you can't, you cannot, if you don't answer those first few questions correctly, you cannot achieve a passing score, right?
Adaptive, adaptive testing does, does automatically, right. Once you start making mistakes, you are, you are relegated to a two.
You're placed on a path that you are destined to not achieve. And I think that's terrible.
I'm glad they're the.
That'd be, that'd be my headline. That's terrible.
And at the state board meeting, end of August, they did note, so it looks like 21% of students in the state of Maryland that took the Algebra One test were proficient. But when they compared that to the PSAT and the SAT, there's a huge discrepancy there. So just another reason why we need to look into changing the assessment.
Okay, we're going to get into some science data here. Our fifth grade science students scored fifth in the state with 33.7% of our students scoring in the proficient range. And in eighth grade, we were at 10th for the state with 36.4% of our students scoring in the proficient range, both of those falling above that state average. And here's a historical look. I was looking at this last night, and if you kind of squint your eyes a little bit, all of those bars on the bar graphs mirror each other. So the bars on the left, the bars on the right, they're all similar to each other. You can see that in, between school year 23 and 24, there was a significant dip in performance at every level. But this year, we are starting, we did start to regain some of the momentum that we lost. You can see that in, for grade five science, we did have a, what was that percentage? Quite a big dip from 44 to 31%, but we are regaining some of that momentum back. We were up to 34% in fifth grade and then 36% in eighth grade.
Any thoughts? Because, you know, looking at the state numbers, similar situation, drop from 35% in 23 to 24% proficient in 24, mirroring the sort of cliff that we all ran over here. Any, any reflection on why, what, what happened?
And I think that we're going to talk a little bit about like the instructional next steps and how our supervisors really dig into that data to figure out what exactly happened and what, what specific areas do we need to make sure we're going back and addressing. I think Katie's going to talk a little bit about that here in just a minute.
Great, thank you.
And Mr. Sanderson, in charge of, basically, he's Donna at the state level. He was perplexed by the drop last year in the science scores. But he was very happy to see the upward trajectory that we're like bouncing back and recovering. So what does it all mean? We take this data and then we want it to mean something. So the instructional next steps are as follows. The content supervisors for the Department of Curriculum and Instruction, as well as school level administrators, principals, assistant principals, have access to not only this collective data, but their school data by, by the school itself and then by grade level, and then they can drill down to teacher and as well as down to the individual student. The content supervisors are comparing this past year's data to school year 24 and providing instructional next steps. They have, and a lot of that was shared with teachers at the August 15th Professional Development Day. Middle and high schools will continue this year. Last year, they started doing the quarterly data meetings. And supervisors and Lisa Bachner as well attended some of those data meetings just to be another layer of support. And we plan to continue that this year. And the elementary schools have continuously been hosting data meetings and UST meetings that drill down all the way to the student, their strengths, their deficits, and where to go from there with instructional guidance from the supervisors.
Universal screening.
I'm sorry, yes.
That's not one that gets bandied about much in public, so, you know.
That's right, yeah.
So do they like put them in smaller groups, the students individually, to help strengthen where they're weak after they make those?
That's correct. After giving, yes, after they're given like a DIBELS assessment, they will break them into like students that have similar deficits. And so if Donna and I have a similar deficit as Dr. Smith, and even if we're in different classrooms, they will group us together to get the targeted instruction.
Did that just start or is that something that you had?
This started last year with the Foundation's pilot schools. Some schools have been doing that. Like I think Carver had been doing that prior to, but there were four schools last year. Duke, Carver, Hollywood, and Letty Dent. This year, we brought in five more schools because we did see great growth from that model, really just teaching kids at where they are, meeting them where they are. And it was really great for grade level teams because they all owned the kids. It was like, you know, just because he's in Ms. Bailey's class, he's with me for 30 minutes a day for targeted reading instruction. So we want to continue on that trajectory. It's unfortunate, we lost an IRT at each building because finding enough support to cut, like, because, you know, you want a smaller group. You don't want a group of 30 coming in. But we are making it work. But that's why we're limiting it. So last year was four, this year it's five. And we'll hope to continue that. As I stated at the beginning of the presentation, the life science MISA and the government MCAP is, the, the information is available to Kevin Wright, our social studies supervisor, and Jason Hayes, science supervisor. And it has been shared with principals and teachers, but it is still embargoed. We're just able to use that internally. The grade eight social studies data is also still embargoed at this time. For parents, the individual school, or, sorry, individual score reports will be delivered to our buildings, are expected to be delivered this week. We have 30 days to get those reports home. But that allows parents to, to actually see how their individual students did on both math ELA, or math and ELA, and they can drill it down by like, maybe I, I performed well on the reading informational text, but the literary text is where I struggled, or maybe it was the writing or just the conventions. Maybe I was able to get my idea across, but my conventions tanked my writing scores. So those reports are very helpful for parents. And in the meantime, parents can go to the Maryland State Report Card because the MCAP data is, has been imported. Attendance, graduation rate, school, like that stuff is, is not there yet, but they can see how their schools did by visiting this website. And Donna will tell you how to do that.
Okay. Mr. Guy, you already referenced this earlier in the meeting. But if you do go to that website that's listed there, it's reportcard@msd, msde.maryland.gov. You can then drill down to the school level, and there are all kinds of filters that you can apply. If you go ahead to the next slide, my good friend to my left here added this screenshot from Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School, one of our five star, five star schools here in the school system. And where you see those red circles up at the top, that's where you can filter. You can filter by year. You can filter by the assessment type, so ELA or math. You can drill down to look at gender, race and ethnicity, all of those pieces that do get factored into that ultimate report card rating that will come out in December. And then the second red circle down there, you can see how the school compared to the district performance level, the state performance level. And then next steps from here, our schools, they're taking all of this data that has been shared with them, and they start working on our school improvement plans. And for our Title I friends, I'm coming from a Title I school myself, they work on a plan that's a little more comprehensive. It's called a schoolwide plan. And basically, they set goals and they set targets. They take a look at how, how they did this past year. They look at historical data and they set goals for the year, and those get submitted. Those are due September 30th this year. So they'll send those in. We'll take a look at them as a system. And then once they're approved, they're available on the school website. So you can, parents can visit those to see what are those focus areas for my school this year.
That concludes our presentation. You guys have any questions?
Josh?
I don't have any questions. I'm encouraged to see the improvement over last year's scores. Hope to see continued improvement over the years ahead. But the word I'd use to describe the data is concerned. I'm a little concerned. But I'm pleased to know that there's acknowledgement that work needs to be done. There's going to be some plans drafted. So, you know, when I was younger, it was MSA.
Right.
And, you know, and elementary school, that's what I had to take.
Yeah.
And I probably brought down mechanics will scores on the math side of things, I gotta be honest. But I, I know that, you know, teaching the test definitely has its faults. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have anything else. Thank you very much. Very informative.
Kathy?
You know, it's an ongoing process. I, when I talk with students, they're, you know, pretty uniformly bright and engaged and, and very capable. It's, I have to remind myself that the kids I see are not, that, that they're more than a test score, and they're only as successful on the test as the test allows them to be. It has always been concerning this idea of an adaptive test. And it sounds like a lot of folks assumed they understood what it meant by an adaptive test. And yet, when you lay it all out for them, they go, I didn't, I didn't understand that. And legislature being chief among those, didn't understand that. And I, I think that's been a wake-up call for all of them to say, you know, maybe we need to take a look at this and what's our role in all of this as well. We need to be able to test our students, but we need to be able to trust that the information we're getting is truly reflective of what our students know and can do. At the end of the day, we need to graduate students who are ready to step onto the next part of their life, whatever that looks like. And I know that we have a ways to go. But I'm confident that the staff is more than capable of making it happen and continuing to make it happen as they have. So very much appreciated. And it will be interesting to see what that RFP looks like and what's the descriptor of what's expected. Better not have the word adaptive in there. That's just my take on things. So, thanks.
If I hear another person say adaptive game theory, AI, generative, evaluate, stop it. We did best when we were Lites and we had paper and pencil tests. And you got a piece of paper and you answered the test and you handed it in. And a human being read through your response, determined what your error pattern was, and evaluated whether or not you had mastered the concept. Every single iteration of assessment that has happened in the state of Maryland has cost more money, substantially more money. We are spending billions of dollars a year in Maryland so that we can do this online platform, whatever. We still don't get the results back in any kind of meaningful way. And I am absolutely heartened by the fact that the current state superintendent says, stop. We're going to put this out. We're going to do things like having an actual psychometric group or psychometricians actually reviewing the assessment to see what it meant. Because if you gave a test to all of the kids in the state of Maryland and it, you dropped 20% or 10% or 12% in one year, it's, you have an issue with the assessment. You don't have an issue with 900,000 children. You have an issue with the assessment. And that's what really needs to happen. And I do believe, I have confidence that the Dr. Wright, that's, that's the, that's the world she's trying to build up there in Baltimore for all of us.
Don't they have like a bank of questions? So that year where we all dropped off the cliff, the bank of questions that they used for one year may have been significantly different than the bank of questions that they used for the next year. So again, you can't compare necessarily accurately one year to the next. And they won't release any of those questions. So you never know, well, why, you know, was the question written poorly? Did it mean different things to different students?
There's no reason to have an assessment that you don't go over afterwards.
Some actionable data.
Action, actionable data. You know, and then that, you know, that is one of the, that's, that's what happens in a classroom. You give a test, you go back over, you look at the error patterns and something that people consistently missed. You pull up that item and you talk through with the class exactly.
Right. What did we miss?
Where was it? Yes. And we haven't done that in the state of Maryland for about the last 20 years. And our scores reflect that lack of diligence. Yes. And we haven't done that in the state of Maryland for about the last 20 years, and our scores reflect that lack of diligence.
Every four years or so, new test.
The kids learn how to beat the test.
But the headline is that St. Mary's County, all arrows continue to go up, and we beat the state level and are in the top 10 school systems across the state of Maryland, regardless of the level of funding that we have received. So we're, we are, we are small but mighty and doing incredible things. And I can't say enough about our instructional leaders, even though there's only one IRT at each one of the schools now, but we had to do that to make the budget work. They're doing, they're doing incredibly amazing work. And teachers themselves, they are, they are some brain-based research, reading specialist, data-driven hug monsters because they also still love kids. And it's evident, it's evidenced in the data. Deep red in St. Mary's County in math.
I do want to note, Donna and I, like I said, we were instructional resource teachers at the middle school. We were both assistant principals at the high school, and then we were both principals at the elementary level. So we've seen these tests at all three levels, and we do not believe that the scores are reflective of what our kids can do, what they know and can do. So that, I mean, we are
Yeah.
top 10, but we know that these scores are not indicative of what they're intellect.
Because not everyone takes the exact same test. Give everyone the same 50 questions and see what happens. Right?
That's just us.
I know. Logical. Shocking.
Wow, older.
Logical. Okay, all right. So our next board meeting, Wednesday evening, September 24th. Executive session at 5 o'clock, meeting room at 6, and we are adjourned.